Good evening and welcome to the, today is?
March 19.
I'm March 19. Thanks Diane. I don't have the exact one because this is the Student Advisory Council. So we're meeting here with the Student Advisory Council from Long Meadow High School. Welcome to all of you and want to have open dialogue with the students to find out what's happening around the campus. Gentlemen?
And as you guys are talking, if you want to move the microphones around to put it in front of whoever is speaking, it might be helpful. So you start us off.
Just for a little background on our group for the new school committee members. So we all, we were all elected by the students and our basic function is to find ways to improve the school. So we meet with you all five times a year with one of these half an hour meetings and we're just trying to like bring up some issues that, like important issues. And we also tried to give you guys an update on what's going on around our school. And I am the full-time member, so I'm supposed to be at all the school committee meetings. And they're all part-time members, so you'll be seeing them five times a year.
And it's required by, Mass General Law requires that school committees have worked with a student advisory committee, so.
And Mr. Dunkley is our trusted advisor. So it's a very big part of this. Yeah, I think we're ready to get started. So we had a survey a couple of weeks ago and it just like asked questions about important issues that, like what students thought about it. So Alex is going to be talking about that.
Yeah, so I sent out the survey just before February break and was just asking for students' input on a variety of issues that we had thought of as members of this committee. But I also left room for students to voice concerns that hadn't been brought up because other than that, we've just been relying, relying on the physical suggestion box for student suggestions as for what needed to be addressed. So I collected some data from the survey that I would like to share with the committee if we can airplay that up on there.
I believe?
It'll take a second for it to warm up.
Okay, yeah. You know?
Do you know?
A-15.
Okay.
So make sure you disable your social media so nothing pops up. Voice of experience.
Yeah, it's a good feature. No, I know, it's not even up there. Yeah, and he's on screen. Okay. So here's the data that we gathered from the survey. So I'm not going to show you the entire document because we went through and kind of picked apart some of the responses on the students left. And students left quite a lot of responses to the short answer questions, which is very helpful and gives us a lot of, a lot to work with. But, so here are the issues that the members of our committee have been discussing so far this year. And I brought, I provided some data here as to what the students ranked on a scale of one to five on a scale of how much of a priority they thought each of these issues was. So kind of surprisingly, the largest issue among the issues that we had thought of turned out to be Wi-Fi connectivity problems in the school with 77, I believe that is 77 students out of about 130 who responded, ranking it as a level, as a five on the priority ranking. So that's definitely something that we're going to be working with IT and with the administration to address. The next largest issue by that, by that measure, by using how many people gave it a five, was the traffic situation. About two-fifths of the students ranked that as a high priority issue. And of course, I think the new school committee members, I'm guessing, were probably briefed on this. But if not, that's some, that's something that our committee has already been, sorry, working to address. Glenn actually came up with an idea earlier this year that he presented to the school committee about that. But so this just confirms that it is a very real issue for many students. I, coming up next was the line for ICE dismissal passes, or no, sorry, navigating Naviots. And again, this is using as far as how many people ranked it as the highest priority. You can kind of interpret these results slightly different ways. So that is concerned mainly seniors. And for anyone who doesn't know, Naviots is a side we use for LHS's side of the college application process. Next up was the line for ICE dismissal passes in the morning. That has become something of a problem because sometimes the line will be inconveniently long in the mornings and students won't be able to get an, get a pass to be dismissed from ICE at the beginning of the day especially, sorry, yeah, especially on days when lots of people are asking, or when lots of people would be signing up for ICE. And then the other issues, such as lack of materials in classrooms, mainly for that, we were discussing lack of tissues. Again, that's kind of a budgetary thing, so it's not necessarily something that we have a ton of control over, but we've been brainstorming ways that we could fix that. And students did leave some comments about that in their short answers. And then the last two were organizing class schedules at the beginning of the year. And I guess that's the last one. Yeah, that's the last one. So yeah, the two major issues for these out of, out of this set were the Wi-Fi and the traffic situation. So then I did ask a short answer question after that that asked for students to elaborate on these issues that we listed. Students provided a lot of feedback on that. I'm not going to go through all of that in detail because it would have taken quite a lot of time. And then I asked another short answer question where students could leave any other, any, any comments about issues that we hadn't thought of here. And so I can scroll down to these and just list off what some of these issues were. Some people mentioned having extra seating outside of the cafeteria, clean, having students clean the computers regularly, which we agreed makes sense if we're going to use them as a resource. They mentioned stuff such as the facilities and the bathrooms, availability of scholarship information for seniors. I'm guessing they're probably referring to Naviots. Other stuff like the food options at lunch. So yeah, we have, we have quite a lot to work with between the first short answer question and the second one. And we were able to get a decent amount of the school to respond. Over 10% of the school population responded to it in some way. So that's pretty much that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, can you, do you know what class years those 130 folks were? Was it mostly seniors or was it spread equally among the four class years?
I did not ask on the survey, so I really have no idea. And it was completely anonymous. We didn't collect people's email addresses or anything, so.
That's fine.
Yeah. I wish I could tell you, but I just don't know.
Do you have an idea about like what the, what the specific issues are related to? I mean, traffic, I'm sure we can all relate to that because of the car lines everywhere in town. But the Wi-Fi connectivity, is it like dead spots? Is it, what, what is it? Or access to certain, you know, sites or what, what exactly is it?
I think it's just that, yeah, it's pretty much dead spots. Like there are just places throughout the school where the Wi-Fi is spotty or where there, where students have connectivity issues. And it's not just that students want to be able to like have Wi-Fi obviously just to screw around on their phones, but.
Right.
Yeah, some, some students specified that they'd been like in the middle of taking online assessments or something like that and the Wi-Fi had cut off.
Got it.
When did you guys do the survey? Was this?
Just before February break.
Okay.
So about a month ago, three weeks.
So to add to that, so this wasn't, this wasn't news to me when they did the survey. And just for the committee's information, when they put the survey together, they ran this by Tom Landers and myself. And we approved the survey to go out asking these questions because we want the answers to them too. So even though it might have been a little bit of surprise to them about the IT side of it, we weren't really surprised. It's been a conversation we've been having. So right after they sent out the survey, our IT department had gone through because they knew about this issue. And they made some equipment changes and also some, some parameter changes. So we're going to need to actually go back, back out and re-survey folks. One of the things that these guys did to their credit is they were actually able to gather some information about not only, you know, is it building-wide or where is it happening, you know? So they've got some information about like particular departments.
Right.
And, and you know, when we talked about, they said, people mentioned the cafeteria and we all looked at each other and said, well, there's 350 people there with their phones. They're overwhelming, you know, the wireless access points. So what we can say is that we just ran the MCAS trial at the high school and we, that was probably the best indicator of have we started to address this in an appropriate way. We had no issues with connectivity at all. Everything went perfect from a connectivity standpoint. The whole trial went well to begin with, but, so we feel like, you know, Nick George and his staff are addressing this well. But we still need to get back out and still keep looking at this because each wireless access point does have a capacity for the number of devices that can access it at any given time. So that's one of, one of the things we're going to continue to look at. But it's great information and it's helpful for us to help pinpoint where to ask Nick George and his staff to go. And then the other big one was the traffic issue. And so, I mean, we did more than just talk about it. Glenn?
Okay, so, yeah, so for those of you who are not here at our past meetings, a few meetings ago, we, I proposed a traffic plan that I had created. It was just roughly a general way just to separate the pickup and drop-off from the buses, from the cars, trying to get into the parking lot, trying to all separate that, basically using the roadwork that we currently have at LHS, trying to minimize the amount of new construction that would have to be done for this new plan. So after I presented to, to the school committee, I then presented it to Sergeant Mazafaro as he met with the rest of the Student Advisory Council. And he generally liked the plan and we were planning to move forward with that. Our next step was for it to go through the hands of the traffic committee in town, in the town of Long Meadow, which is the elected committee doing with the traffic issues. And from there, it hasn't, they have not met to discuss that plan yet. So that's kind of, that's currently where we're at with that plan. But I think that's just the general thing because again, it is a huge issue for parents and teachers and students alike all at LHS, trying to deal with the traffic issues just at these times in the morning, mainly in the morning and a little bit after school.
If that person would just pull all the way up, it's a whole.
And there's that, but I, I think now having lived with it for six years, you know, I've, from my, my standpoint, I've got no problem saying that the design was poor. It does not meet our needs. And unfortunately, you know, students, faculty, parents, the community are all, are all having to live with something that's substandard. So we're living with it, but even six years later, there's still no acceptance that this is, this is okay.
So there's no word on the horizon when the traffic committee is going to look at that or?
They were planning on meeting the past couple of months. I don't think they have met. I think they've delayed their meeting for the past few months now. So hopefully when they meet next, we'll have their feedback from the plan. I think it then has to go through some like the DPW, maybe the roadwork engineers in town have to also approve the plan. Then it comes to this thing of a budget, coming up the budget for how much construction needs to be done. So I mean, there's a lot more that's left. But again, I tried to minimize the amount of construction that would have to be done, trying to keep it plain and simple, just moving everything much faster.
Just wanted to kind of make a note. A lot of us have talked about this over a lot of years and come up with various ways to approach this. And Glenn's approach is unique. It was different than anything we had seen from our experts in town, from engineers, from laypeople. And everybody looked at and said, wow, why didn't we think of that? That makes some sense. It does require expenditure of capital to do it because we're going to need at least, what, one more curb cut on the street and at least one more out of the parking lot.
Yeah, a little wide.
So, so there's definitely money that would be involved in doing this, but it looks like something that is, from a layman's standpoint, doable. Everybody, everybody who looks at it goes, wow, that's a pretty good idea. We need to pursue that. But again, funding, I think funding's going to be, you know, the pivotal issue here. So we've got a ways to go.
And if you need any description about the plan, feel free to contact me. I'll have a whole description already, already set up for anyone who wants to know.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Quick question. Do we, it looked like there was an absolute ton of great information in there. Do we get a copy of that after that we can take a look? I couldn't read it. My eyes are not good. So I tried.
Yeah, I put it in, because else I would have to like scroll over.
Yeah. But is it something that we'll get, I mean, it looked like?
Would you be able to share that with us, a hard copy of it?
I have it. I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Wanted to share that with you and then share that to the committee?
Perfect.
Mr. Dunkley, will that include the questions that were asked as well?
Yep. I'll make sure you get everything.
I mean, I can share the actual survey with them if they want. I'm not sure if that's any more useful than just sharing this document.
When you share the survey?
It would be much more helpful than the survey itself. He took all the data and aggregated it.
That's fine.
So next we have a, we have an update on a suggestion box. So for new members, we have a suggestion box. It's at the library and Mr. Dunkley responds to all of the serious comments. And so for the past month, our more constructive suggestions have been more art around the school, which Mr. Dunkley is talking to the art teachers about, and more anti-Jew signs. So, yeah.
And the spring season began this week and I'm just going to talk about the winter season. The boys hockey and girls hockey team won the Western Mass titles with the girls having their best season in their history. The boys and girls basketball team unfortunately lost in the semifinals. And the boys swimming team won their fifth straight sectional title and placed top 10 in their state meet while the girls won their third straight sectional title. And girls track finished with a record of 11 and 2 while boys track finished with a record of 10 and 0.
All right, quick music update. So around January, we had the district's concert and some students performed music such as jazz on the piano and.
He's a piano player.
And, yeah, and band, and all the, a bunch of band and chorus kids also performed. After that, there was also the all-state festival and, and a lot of kids from the school also went there to the Seaport Hotel and practiced for like eight hours for two days. It was interesting to, and they performed in the Boston Symphony Hall. In addition, there was a, there was a concert around the Friday before break. And finally, more recently, the music department's been preparing to basically set up for next year now since Wind Ensemble and Lyrix auditions are coming up. And yeah.
So for clubs, Model UN has just attended two of its conferences for the year. One was at UMass, one was at Clark University. It's currently looking to go to more one-day conferences for the spring and also for the fall. Both of them went very well. The club is growing and it's going great. A new club has also started called Model Congress, which is similar to Model UN, yet students are able to pretend to be Congress members instead of UN members. And we had our first conference at AIC this year, which went well. Debate is also attending various competitions in our area. It's had two, I believe. One of them is at Southfield Academy and it has one more coming up. It's going great. The, the plan this year is about immigration and illegal immigrants. So it's basically just the debate club goes and supports our plan while trying to pick up our other plans and arguing why ours is better. Science Olympiad has its state conference this Saturday. And Key Club just hosted two college students from Los Angeles where they came to talk about the water crisis in Africa. And then for Student Council, the juniors just had their donut day where they give out free donuts to their class members to boost class morale. And they're currently starting to plan their senior class play, they're meeting with constituents from their class and they're trying to decide which play that they're, they're going to end up doing. And then sophomores are starting to plan sophomore semi. So we just met with Twin Hills and we have a semi-committee to form decorations and trying to recruit more people to come to the event. It's, it's in two weeks from Friday and we're really looking forward to it. And then the freshmen are doing a Chipotle fundraiser right now where they're recruiting people to go to Chipotle and buy burritos for them to raise money.
So that's all we have for you today.
Are there any questions for any of the members? This is Gianna.
So thank you all for, I, I am a new member, so forgive me if this question is, is not on point, but are there any young women on the council?
No. I mean, you're allowed to have up to 10 partial members and no girls signed up. So yeah, it would be nice if more girls signed up next year, but hopefully that will happen.
Thank you.
You guys are too intimidating. It's a good question. You, you obviously were part of the swimming team. Were you sort of?
I am, yeah.
How'd you do individually? I just wanted to know because you seem to be pretty proud of it.
I didn't do so well because I kind of slept in my shoulder bed the night before and then I heard it even more at the event. I ended up going to the urgent care. I didn't do that well, but the team did.
You look like you like won the championship the way.
My team did. I just kind of take.
It's all right. It happens. It happens. Next time.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you very much, all of you. Appreciate it. And, you know, if you have any questions or concerns or anything you guys think we can do better for you, don't hesitate to bring it. I know you won't. You guys never hesitate, but that's good. So thanks.
Well done. Thank you.
No, because Diane. So I haven't called the meeting to order yet. We're going to take a quick, two-minute recess and then come back. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 19th, 2019 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. I'm calling the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV as well as being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It's a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they're recording this meeting at this time. Thank you. We'll start the meeting as we do customarily with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed of justice for all. Clerk, we have some correspondence.
Following correspondence will be recorded. An emailed letter dated March 1st, 2019 from Mr. Donald Jarvis of Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative regarding the Student of the Month for February 2019. Long Meadow students honored are David Good, Carpentry One, Austin Munson, Integrated Occupational Prep. Also, an email letter from Ms. Jen Cosgrove dated February 18, 2019 endorsing Mr. James Ryan for school committee.
Okay, thank you. We have minutes for approval. I will take a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 12th, 2019 school committee as, committee meeting as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Sorry?
Motion and second. Any, first, any further discussion? Seeing none, a call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Thank you. There's a second motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 21st, 2019 school committee meeting as presented.
So motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? There we go. At this time, I would open up any visitor comments. Seeing that there are no visitor comments, I'll now open up for school committee announcements and recognition. Yes. Are you guys going to fight?
No.
I saw several people there from the school committee and a lot of teachers and administrators and tons of parents at the Ties event, which was just amazing. I'm sure we could all talk about it for, for quite some time. But thank you to Sandy and everyone that put in so much time and effort. It was extremely successful, just very impressive. And even the young students doing such a good job. They're super confident. Their teachers did a really good job preparing them. So it was just a great event all around.
Great. Brian?
I was going to say the same thing. I love ties. I tried to go into every single room. And my son was with the Lego Robotics, which was, which is really, they're a wild little bunch. Next to the real robot that was on the other side of the library. I thought that was great. And I had the pleasure of going to my first cheerleading event. My daughter has a friend on the cheerleading team and they do a pretty good job. That was actually very impressive. I've never seen a cheerleading competition before. It's very peppy and athletically, just athletically, it's amazing what those, what those girls do. It was very impressive. And our team did very well that day. So it was good.
Awesome. Any further comments? Kevin?
Just a shout out to the winter sports athletes. Just a wonderful season. And for me, I really enjoyed going to all the track events. And we had some really wonderful competitors who competed at the state level and even at the national level. And so that was really exciting to see our students do so well. And, and I know Marty was there at Holy Cross for the, the, the boys hockey game, which was a heartbreaker and double overtime and then a shootout. But I mean, that was really a wonderful hockey game and it was great to see how well our team did. And the final thing that, that I want to say is that there's a concert on Friday. So we have a lyrics concert with Hofstra on Friday and I'm really looking forward to that.
Any further comments?
Anybody mention robotics this weekend or no?
Their first competition is at Winnick, both Saturday and Sunday. And I think the Sunday day is the day that they kind of battle each other. So if you want to support our robotics team and our new robot, that'd be great.
I guess the, a few things I'd, I'd want to just recognize on my, for myself. I was at the Western Mass Junior District Concert on Saturday. Kayla Whirlin is the head of the Western Mass Music Educators. And the students from Glenbrook, Williams and Long Meadow High School performed. It was a wonderful time. Just, just great, great day of music. The string festival here in town was last week. This one got to me. And it, it got to me that I was sitting at the top of the bleachers and I saw all the fourth and fifth grade string players in front of me. And then, you know, you had the high school and you had the middle school. But it reminds me back like in 2007 when I first came on the committee. Our debate at that time was whether we were going to add the fourth grade strings back into the program or not. And, and quite frankly, with the budget the way it was at that time was, were we even going to have that string program at all in the, the elementary schools? And just seeing these like hundreds of little people playing the instruments together and, I don't know, it got to me. It was just, and it just brings to show the power of what serving on the school committee can do in your community for a positive force. And, and I do not regret any decisions we made back then to, to put the string program back on the footing it was. And, and I can say, I mean, the kids have returned in, in multitudes, back to the community with, with that music. So, so it was a great concert by all. Congratulations to Long Meadow Music. All right. Any other comments? Okay, business with guests. Tonight, we have the introduction of our new facility director. Nick Gergantis is the new facility- Nick Gergantis is the new facility director for the town and, uh, he's here to answer any questions the committee might have.
As Nick is making his way up, I wanna, um, thank Tom for working with the DPW on the screening and interviewing process and we're really pleased to have, uh, Nick on board. He has, uh, already in his short time with us, he's met with all the principals, uh, he, I, we had a chance to sit with him as well. Uh, he's gotten up to speed on the, on the strengths and deficiencies of our buildings. He understands, uh, what needs to be addressed and particularly like Nick's attention to , uh, safety, uh, and, uh, we also talked a lot about, um, air quality and, and, uh, some of the work that we've done in that area and we wanna make sure that we sustain that work, so, um, welcome, Nick Gergantis.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to meet you all. Congratulations to the new members. I'm really excited to be on board. Um, I've never met a collective of so many dedicated and talented individuals, uh, that we have here in the Long Meadow School System, so I really can't say enough how excited I am to be on board.
Maybe a little bit about your background, Nick?
Sure.
That might be helpful to the committee and then if they may have questions.
I got started in my career path in facilities, I guess in, uh, two thousand and seven, uh, working for a company out of Florida that was going up and down the east coast installing, uh, utility meters, uh, for multifamily applications, apartment buildings, um, and condos. So that's where I got my hands dirty and seeing the, the workings of buildings, facilities, et cetera, uh, during my time there. Uh, came across another company called Avalon Bay Communities. Uh, I'd got sick of traveling so much and wanted to stay close to home, so I started working with them, uh, at their apartment complexes and, uh, really started from the ground up, um, was painting walls, turning apartments, um, then I got into troubleshooting, uh, HVAC, electrical appliances, and from there started running, uh, some crews. I worked at eight different communities in eight years, saw old communities, new communities, new construction acquisitions, retrofits into, uh, hospitals, converted into apartments, and, uh, finally ended up here. And my last position, I was, uh, working down in Bloomfield, Connecticut, uh, as a property manager, but couldn't pass up this opportunity.
We appreciate the chance to introduce Nick to you, uh, from time to time, uh, for our new members, uh, from time to time. Representatives from DPW will meet with the committee to, uh, get you some information, update you on conditions and, uh, explain plans and projects, so, uh, we're, we're really excited to have Nick on board.
Thank you.
See if you have any questions for Nick?
Can I ask a question about the pool?
You can ask whatever you want. You may not know, but.
So, congratulations and welcome, and I'm new too, so I appreciate you coming on board. Um, so my son's a swimmer and the past two seasons, the pool, is there any, have you heard anything about the pool air quality or, you know, like that space, is there gonna be any assessment of what's going on in there?
Not so much in regards to the air quality. Uh, I know we do wanna resurface the pool and we'll be swapping out the pump soon as well on the pool, uh, but in regards to air quality, um, I'm sorry, I don't have anything for you, but I can certainly dive into that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So Nick, I guess, uh, just coming in, what are your initial impressions of, of what you've seen so far? I mean, how are you feeling about the, the, you know, the physical plant?
We have some, we have some older buildings, um, that present some certain challenges. However, it seems the teams have been doing a very good job in keeping everything together, but the age of some of these buildings are really the biggest challenge and, and seeing what we need to tackle first and prioritizing our, our projects.
Nick and I had a chance to talk a little bit about the, uh, the middle schools and he was anxious to read the, uh, lengthy statements of interest that we, uh, are submitting to the Mass School Building Authority and so, uh, it's a quick study and been impressed by how quickly seems to grasp all the issues that we're dealing with at the middle schools at least, so.
Sure. Any other questions? I'm sure we'll be talking a lot more, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you, Nick. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Pupil Service Annual Report. We have Gene Fontaine here, uh, to present. You should have in your packet the, uh, update as well.
So annually, uh, you will hear from different central office administrators, um, perhaps a technology report, perhaps a, a special education report, uh, and we thought that this is sort of perfect timing because it provides some information that will help with the orientation of our new members, so it's really, uh, you know, kind of an informational presentation, but I think it'll provide you with some really critical baseline information that you'll need going forward to make important decisions, so, uh, Gene has done, uh, an outstanding job wrapping up her third year as our Director of Pupil Services and, um, um, has done a great job at ensuring that we're providing inclusive programming and, um, doing it in a way that is attentive to, um, attentive to federal special education law and attentive to the needs of kids and so, thanks, Gene, for coming out tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And maybe we can dim the lights? There you go, that's good.
So I just wanna start by saying if there's, if you want follow-up information or if there's anything that you, you know, you have follow-up questions or, um, just wanna discuss with me or learn more, I know everybody's probably at a different starting place when it comes to special education. Many people have no experience, some people have only experience as a parent, um, and some people have experience as educators' parents and so, um, I'm happy to meet with anybody if, if you want, you know, follow-up on that, so. There's a lot of information in this, so we'll just kinda get started, I guess. And please, um, ask questions along the way. Okay. So the first, um, the two guiding principles really for special education are, um, providing FAP, which is a free and appropriate public education, um, to students with disabilities, and we do that in what we call LRA, LRE, which is the Least Restrictive Environment. So we are obligated by the law to try to educate students with disabilities with their peers whenever possible. So those are kind of the two guiding principles, um, that drive our work. So here are things, so most of this presentation is based on our annual numbers and reports and we based that on our October one data, so, um, this is our trend for data. If you look, um, total students, our population is, as of October one, was two thousand eight hundred seventy-four students and five hundred and fifty-eight of those students are students with disabilities. So you'll often see that SWD, that's Students with Disabilities. Um, so we're really trending, you know, nothing out of the norm, we're kinda chugging right along here, um, with our numbers, nothing of concern there. And then referrals, so referrals are referrals for evaluations when a parent or the school requests that a student be evaluated to determine whether or not they have a disability and we track that data. So if you look at our staff referrals, um, we only had sixty-five last year, so this is all based on last school year. This is data that I kinda crunch over the summer, um, so that was down and our parent referrals was kinda hanging steady and overall, um, our referrals were a hundred and four, which was lower than the year before, but we do tend to have this up and down cycle where we'll have a year where it's low and the next year we'll, we'll make up for it and we're kind of on that track this year, it feels like anyway, so, again, nothing out of the norm, but, um, most of our referrals are coming from staff, which is how it should, should happen really. Um, so then when you look at our students, so I had said we had five hundred and fifty-eight students with disabilities and when you look at, um, and that's preschool through twenty-two, so special education services can be provided till stu-, to students all the way up until their twenty-second birthday. So we have, um, our greatest categories are health, um, which encompasses quite a few, um, disabilities within that health category, communication, which is speech and language, um, specific learning disabilities, those are the bulk of our disabilities and then, um, as you can see, neurological, autism, developmental delay, emotional, intellectual and, uh, multiple disabilities, so, um, that's kind of the breakdown and we just, we continue to look at that every year and there's nothing, um, kinda jumping out. So when you look at our overall five hundred and fifty-eight students, um, five hundred and fourteen of them are served in district, so that's, that's really awesome. Um, that's a lot of kids. Full inclusion means they spend the majority of their day with their peers in the classroom, engaged in that instruction, and that's where we wanna see kids because that's where they make really good gains. And then our partial inclusion, I'll get to later, those ninety-six are, some of them are in, um, the, you know, general ed, but they might have a little bit more pullout, so they'll have support services in a resource room. And that also includes our special programs, which I'll get into later on. Um, so when you look at the right side of this slide, these are our kids that we can't serve in district and they're out being served somewhere else. So, um, those numbers are, are down, but when you look at the overall twenty-seven, that's, that's less than one percent of our total population, so that really speaks to what a great job, um, all of our teachers, our paras, our principals are doing in, in our schools, 'cause we are able to service the majority of our students, which is great. So that's good news. Um, when you look at our decline, um, if you look at our four-year trend here, um, our out-of-district, like public day, public and private day, sometimes those are collaborative programs and it's how they're coded, um, so I, I can't even tell you who those kids are or what programs they are because it's how the collaborative, um, codes things and some of them are schools like Valley West Day School or the May Center for Autism are some of the private day schools. Uh, but if you look at that residential number, so in two thousand fifteen, we had seventeen residential students and as of October one, we were down to one, so, uh, over that four years, um, which is a huge move. Some of that is we had a cohort of older students that aged out and we no longer need to serve them, but the other thing is that, um, transition services, so services for students eighteen to twenty-two, that's their transition to adulthood, um, there is just more and more, um, available locally. So in the past, we would have to place kids residentially because the services were far away. So now that there's more available right here, um, we're able to keep kids home, which is great, 'cause you don't want them to get a job in another community, they turn twenty-two, they move home and they have no connection, so it's really better outcomes for kids, but that's a huge decline and that's really good to see. Um, so I, talking about our program, so in our special education program, we start with our integrated preschool at age three. Our kids are fully, the whole evaluation process is done and students by their third birthday coming in from early intervention have an IEP and are ready to start school. And, uh, we have a, we have an awesome program. We have a very, um, a growing number of students with autism in our preschool and so we also have kind of a sub-separate classroom where we do discrete trial teaching for students with autism and that's our ABA classroom, Applied Degradal Analysis, um, so that's in our pre-K. Then our LINK program is also for students with autism and that services kids in K through eight, um, and they are in the regular classroom for at least a portion of their day and then they get specialized instruction and related services in the LINK classroom. And we have LINK at Blueberry, Wolf Swamp and Williams right now, so those are the three schools serving those students. Um, our next program is our language-based learning disability, so that is, also serves students in grades through, through eight. The elementary program is housed at Blueberry Hill, but services all three schools. If a student needs that program, then we get them over to Blueberry and then the middle school portion of that is at Williams. Then we have our, um, LLC, which is our Long Meadow Learning Center, which is a partial inclusion program for students who are learning at a slower rate, need repeated practice and sometimes a different curriculum than their peers. They also have inclusion time, so those students are working with their peers in the general ed classroom for some classes, but have more pullout and that program is at Center School and also at Glenbrook Middle School. Then our next program is our PALS program and it's a program for academic learning language and social skills, so these students have academic, but also social and language, um, and some behavioral challenges related to the social challenges that they have. And that program is at Wolf Swamp and also at Glenbrook. And then in the high school, we also have a life skills, um, program for more involved students who are not on a, um, high school diploma track, um, and are looking, those would be students that we would service till twenty-two and help them get a job and, um, develop their life skills and that starts at LHS. Any questions about any of the programs?
I have a question.
Yep.
So the, uh, the autism program goes up to eight, so when the students become ninth graders, what is the plan at the high school for them?
Well, the plan is we'll have a program for them because we just put the middle school program in this year. Um, so it's not that we don't have students with autism at the high school, um, we just, they haven't had a level of need that we needed a separate program, so we're kind of watching this new cohort and, um, if we need it, um, my hope is we will build it and be able to service those students.
So as you built that cohort for the middle schools, did that start in the younger grades and it's kinda just?
Yeah.
We're watching the bubble?
Yeah, and we had a couple of move-ins as well, which, um, made it come a little bit early, so. Yeah, I'm like always watching numbers and, um, groups and cohorts.
I just had a quick question also about the ABA program. So is there, uh, is, is that fully, uh, separate currently and there's opportunities for students to, as they grow in their skills, to be able to go out into a regular classroom?
There are, I don't believe there are any students that only come into the ABA, so they would do half-day preschool and half-day ABA.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, everyone that is coming to preschool is getting a preschool classroom experience and some are, in addition, are doing a half-day.
And same as the LINK program?
Correct. Yep, very similar.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Great. Um, so then here's our staffing as far as enrollment and number of IEPs and percentages, so, um, the state average is about seventeen percent, um, and we're right about eighteen, which has been consistent, that's been our pattern, you know, no big, no big change. Um, you know, the percentage in each building is up and down based on program, um, enrollment. So Glenbrook right now, because they house two programs and they're a relatively small school and the programs are full, it's upped their percentage, but that will, that will level out next year when some kids move on, so. And then it has our staffing, our, you know, uh, number of teachers and paraprofessionals.
So the majority of paraprofessionals at Wolf Swamp are probably dedicated to the preschool?
The preschool, yeah, yeah. Half of those are preschool. Mm-hmm.
Gene, while, while you're on this one, can you just talk a little bit about kids like moving in and out of special education? Like I, I, I don't think kids are always in, right, like is there some movement or once you're in?
Do you mean, do you mean, um, as far as eligibility or as far as during their day?
So I feel like I've heard of kids who had an IEP when they were in, let's say, the middle school, then they get to the high school and they no longer need it. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yep. Um, that happens, I, I wouldn't say it's a ton, but certainly every year we have, we have kids that exit their IEP, um, but, and we must, 'cause our numbers aren't constantly growing, we're kind of, you know, settling out. I feel like we lose a senior class with, you know, maybe twenty-five and then over the year we're picking, we're kind of replacing those students, but, um, many, many students stay in special ed their whole journey, um, but there are certainly students who do not.
Okay, so a majority of the special ed kids will start in the elementary school and they'll stay the entire time?
I would say the majority of our referrals, yes, are at the elementary school. That's when we're identifying students, um, and then kids that do come off, might come off in elementary, middle or high school, but I would say most of our, not most, but, um, a good amount of kids are still on an IEP when they're graduating.
Certainly the, the level or type of service that they might receive will change.
Their services may decrease.
Yeah.
Um, and they certainly, services change every year, um, but I wouldn't say that if you're gonna come in, you know, you're definitely gonna exit. Some kids just need these supports to get through.
Is, is it your experience too, um, that students who maybe are speech-language involved probably exit more frequently than other students in other disability categories?
Definitely. So students that are just requiring, um, related services in the early elementary, OT, PT, speech and language, those students may not require an, an IEP for academics ever, um, but I would say students that are getting reading and math and writing support or academic support just to kind of manage the whole workload, um, probably are going to have a longer journey on their IEP. going to have a longer journey on their IEP. So again, back to the preschool, they transition in, actually at two, two years, nine months is when we start getting involved, and our preschool coordinator does home visits, or visits the student if they're in an early childhood center or something, and then we, we start the process of bringing them in. I already talked about the ABA and the autism program that we have there. We have a really strong partnership with our preschool. We actually meet with the two, two of the preschools that are private in town, and we consult with them, we invite them to our PD, and help them out when they have students that they're struggling with, and so that's kind of something that's new, but we're pretty proud of that partnership. And the preschool is working, just like the rest of the school, on social, emotional learning, so there are new standards that the preschool is putting in for their students as well.
And just so everybody knows, later in the evening on the agenda, we'll be voting on the fees for that, the preschool, yes.
So again, our elementary programs, our partial inclusion numbers are up, and that's because our out-of-district numbers are down, which means we're servicing more students at home, and our goal is to keep kids in their home school, which is kind of the reasoning behind expanding the LINK program to Blueberry this year. It was only at Wolf Swamp last year, and now it's also at Blueberry, which has been great for kids to go to their neighborhood school. And I already talked about all the programs and where they are.
I guess from an efficiency perspective, does that dilute the efficiency of the program by putting it in multiple schools?
We don't have enough students to fill it, so you would end up having, you know, the LLD program may have six students and one teacher and a para, so if you did it in every school, you'd have a teacher-to-student ratio of like one-to-one, you know, or two-to-one, so it's not, and then you just, honestly, you don't have the cohort for the instruction, so. But when we did have the cohort for LINK, we split it, and, you know, we had fourteen students at Wolf Swamp last year, and now it's seven and seven, and it's been great. So, again, our middle school programs, we have the same programming as we have at the elementary, and the LINK is started because we just added that in January. So the goal was to add it in September of nineteen, but we had a few move-ins this summer that kind of helped us speed up the timeline a little bit, and we were fortunate to be able to add a teacher and a paraprofessional over at Williams to start the LINK program there. And we actually moved a couple kids across town to access it, and it has been wonderful. Parents are happy, as far as I know. Students are very happy when, when you go and see them, and we made a great hire with the new teacher in there, so that's all going great. And like I said, we have the other programs, two programs at Glenbrook and two at Williams, so we try to spread everything out. And then again, we talked about the high school, the life skills program, so trying to promote independence in adult life. They also access general ed classes of interest, so if they're interested in music, they will take a music class, these, you know, they're, they have student mentors that work up there with the students. We have one of our older students who's actually out working on a job site, and we are supervising that with an educational coach that's helping him there. And we have our first student at ICE, the ICE program at Westfield State, it's inclusive concurrent enrollment, so it's four students who are not diploma-eligible, are, you know, not going to be typical college-ready, and they have a program that we're a member of. It took us a couple of years to get accepted into the program, and we have our first student there. So he's auditing a class, he's there with an educational coach, he has a peer buddy on the Westfield State campus, he is accessing a class, auditing it, he's using the gym, the library, the career center, the tech center, and there's just, it's just a really growing field, this Think College for Everyone, and Massachusetts is really leading the charge on that with UMass Boston, and they're the ones that kind of started this program at Westfield. And our student is really maturing and big changes, it's been awesome to take this journey with this young man. So, yeah, we're excited to hopefully get another student there next year, so it's a great opportunity. If you ever want to look at Think College Initiative, there's some really fascinating research coming out.
So where, we have, I'm sorry, Bronwyn. So you have a student going out, working daily with a job coach, do you see that expanding for other students in the program?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, yeah. One of our problems, we have small cohorts, so, you know, larger communities can build a whole program for that, and sometimes I guess it's a benefit, because we are able to individualize it and really tailor it to what the student is looking for. So we've been pretty creative with that, but yes, we have a student who's out working, and it's going fairly well.
Great.
I know there were some teachers who did some training, I think, on co-teaching, I think it was in December. I was just wondering what the status is of co-teaching at the high school?
We actually do a lot, quite a bit of co-teaching at the high school, in all subject areas, and we're looking to expand that, so it continues to grow. And we're actually trying to get more and more of it into the elementary. We have probably our most co-teaching going on at the high school, then the middle, and you'd think it would be the other way around, but we have a lot of interest to explore that at the elementary level, so.
Those foundation courses at the high school are largely geared, are supported by co-teaching models, is that?
They can, yes, they are, and some, and we have, some of the CP2 classes are co-taught as well, so, yeah, there's some nice pairs that work well together, and we, you know, continue to foster those. So focusing on transition, we've done a lot of work with the middle school and high school, so that every fourteen-year-old leaving the middle school has a transition plan in their IEP, and that's kind of their vision for life after high school. And that's how we, you know, look at kids for, do you want to work, do you want to go to post-secondary, part-time, full-time, what's your plan? And that actually starts in eighth grade, so, and that's all been new that we've done over the last two years. We've developed a very close working relationship with some of the adult agencies. In fact, we meet with Mass Rehab and Department of Developmental Services, DDS, two adult agencies, every six weeks, they come in, we talk about our kids, we look for opportunities for them. And actually, MRC, Mass Rehab, they were able to teach a class last year to our students, they're going to run it again this spring, and it's on pre-employment and training, and students develop their resume, they write cover letters, they look for jobs, they practice interview skills. It's all free through Mass Rehab, and then we were very fortunate last year to have several students participate in a one-hundred-hour paid internship through MRC, so they were working after they finished the class. So depending on their funding this year, we're hoping to tap into MRC to get a few more kids some internships. So that's been really neat.
What's the home base for those stu, for students aging out, eighteen to twenty-two, if they're not outplaced? Are they here in, like, are they, are they coming to school, or are they just out in the community, like?
Could be a combination of the high school situation like Westfield State, a work experience, could be another college through NIBUS, a New England Business Associates helps us with, with programming like that. So there's programs at Springfield College that we access, like Career Ladders, and we've accessed programs at Hoyou Community individually for students. So again, we're really creative, because we do have a small cohort that we don't kind of get in this rut that everyone's going here, so it's been really neat. So new additions this current school year that were in the budget that we're currently in, was moving, well, we moved the LINK program to Blueberry from Wolf Swamp, that was one big thing this year, and then adding the teacher and the paraprofessional to the LINK program for, for Williams. In addition to that, we added a special education teacher to every elementary school, which has been, I can't tell you how helpful and wonderful that has been, and so well-received. So right now, all of our fifth grades have a dedicated special education teacher, so they're able to get in classrooms almost the majority of the day. They are working with kids in the classroom, doing full inclusion, co-teaching, and that's going really well, so I just thank everybody for that, that was just such a great investment. We also added another board-certified behavior analyst to the district, so now we have three behaviorists on staff, which is great. We've instituted weekly meetings with them, so they're not as isolated, they're, they're meeting every week, and we're talking about kids, and we're talking about programs and supports that we can bring into all of the schools, as behavior continues to be a concern and so something that we need, need some help with. Our OT and our OT assistants are all full-time, that was new this current year. We were able to increase all three of those positions, which has been also a great addition. And then the transition educational coach, that's the support person that goes to Westfield State with our student, and she is having a wonderful time, really, just digging into a position that was really hard to describe to her, because I had no idea how it was going to go, so. So those are all our new additions. Our SEAL, our SEAL is our parent group, and that meets the second Tuesday of the month. They just met last week, they had a great turnout, and the elementary supervisors came and talked about programming and supports for students at the elementary level, really well-attended, and other workshops that they presented this year was Basic Rights for Parents with Special Needs, so the Federation for Children came out and did that. They also ran another workshop through the Federation for Children that's building effective communication with your, with your schools, and, oh, and then, so I'm going to get into our DESI review, we just had our coordinated program review, or tiered focus monitoring, whatever, they renamed it to make it less scary. But the DESI results, they did a parent survey, they had, they felt it was a pretty good response, and there was no trend in the data, so it was more personal information, but there was no trend of, you know, people being upset, or, you know, that were not doing something, they, there was really not much to talk about in that data, but they were surprised they got a pretty good turnout, or return on the survey. So tiered focus monitoring, so this is a process, it's huge. So it actually started in January of last year, where they tell you what they're going to basically come in, and it's a compliance audit, are you following the special ed regulations, civil rights regulations, and we also had ELL done at the same time. So they, they give you the information in January, you do a full self-assessment for a few months, upload that, and then they come and do their onsite, which they just did in February of this year. So three of the things that they looked at, we were in full compliance on, and that's timelines for referrals and evaluations. So if a parent requests an evaluation, or the school requests an evaluation, we have to get that done in forty-five school days, and we were a hundred percent in compliance on that. The same thing with early intervention, transitions from preschool, making sure you have an IEP signed in place and ready to go on a student's third birthday, we were in compliance on that. And then the transition planning, that form that I was talking about earlier, that our eighth graders, that every student fourteen and older has a transition plan about what their vision is post-high school, and that was another area that we were in full compliance with, so that was great. And then other areas, I mean, there's just, it's so massive, it's hard to kind of tailor it down, so I just brought out some of the areas. So they look at, are you following the regulations for how you're writing an IEP? Are you making sure your parents are actually coming to the meetings and you can prove that they've signed in to the IEP meeting? Are we offering a continuum of services, from inclusion to partial inclusion to substantially separate, to day placements, to residential, and we absolutely can demonstrate that we're doing all of that. We also have obligations to pri, to the private schools, and we were able to prove that as well. So we have to spend a proportionate fair share of our federal funds on students with disabilities at the two private schools in town, and we also have a very good collaborative relationship with those schools, so. The other thing they look at is instructional groupings. So that is looking at a teacher's schedule, a special education teacher's schedule, and if she has a group, say, from nine to nine-thirty, those kids can't be more than forty-eight months apart in age, and we actually have to check that. So, I mean, it's, it's a lot of tedious work, but it's interesting to be able to see it, and you know what you're doing really well and where we need to improve. So I found the self-eval process to be really, not, not bad, I don't want to say it was enjoyable, but it was, it was a good reflection of what are our next steps. So the age span requirements, we were fine with that. You know, things like equal opportunity to participate in academic, extracurricular, and all of that, so that's finding things in handbooks and notices that go out, so it's really a lot of digging about what we do and where you find information, but our websites are really, really rich. And then related services, making sure that we offer occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, vision supports, all of that, and we were fine on all of that. We had three areas for civil rights that were looked at. One is making sure that counseling services are available to all students, which was not a, not an issue. Making sure our materials are free from bias and stereotypes. And then the last one was the responsibilities of the school principal, which is around response to intervention, tiered instruction, students that are homebound for illness, making sure they're getting tutoring, things like that, all not a problem. So we also, like I said, had the E, oops, the ELL audit at the same time, and these are some of the things that they were looking at for our English language learners, which is not special, part of special education, I just also wear that hat. So I oversee our, our ELL program, so I put this in there, but that is not special education, it's pupil services, so. And we were fine on that, we have, we're fortunate to have three full-time ELL teachers that are able to, you know, support students in four of our buildings. We do not have ELL at Williams or Center School, so we do move kids if they need those services, but we, they do a great job of screening them within, you know, probably twenty-four hours of registration, we have them screened in case we do need to move their school, so. These are just some things that they looked at, and I think that one went really well too. So trends?
Jean, can we just back up one sec? How many students do we have in that program?
In ELL, about twenty, twenty-two, it varies from, you know, up to twenty-five and then down.
That's total in the whole district?
Total in the whole district, yep.
Thank you.
It's very, it's a very small, we're a low-incidence district. So trends, our behavioral needs of students is?
Before Jean moves off to tiered focus monitoring, I had asked Jean to bring all the binders associated with this compliance review, and Jean being modest and putting a good spin on things wouldn't do that, but it was.
Well, it's a gigantic bin.
Yeah, we would have needed a couple of custodians. It was a, a huge undertaking, it required months of preparation, and I think you should feel good as a committee that we are in what's called self-directed monitoring, and districts that, and even in that tier, we performed well. Districts that are not in compliance with these reviews find themselves in a more focused review tier, and so it's a, it's sort of kudos to Jean, she is our own internal compliance officer, she does a great job, kind of regularly checking on these things, and I just didn't want to let that go without, you know, you understanding the, the depth and breadth of this review. It was, it was, it was huge, and yet it used to be worse. DESI has taken, taken the edge off it a little bit by not making high-performing districts, you know, do all the work that districts that are not in compliance have to do, so. So Jean's being modest, I just wanted to point that out, so.
Thank you. So trends, our behavioral needs of students is on the rise, like I said before, but we, we have a plan for that.
Is that Long Meadow specific?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, I-
And what are the drivers behind that?
I don't know, I wish I knew that, I'm not really sure, not really sure, but I- But I meet with the other special ed directors for the other collaborative communities regularly, and we are all experiencing the same thing. And it's not just, you know, Western Mass, it's kind of across the board.
Okay.
So I don't know.
It's a national.
It is.
Completely, it's a national issue.
Do you have any questions, Claire?
Oh, just, just...
You don't have to be polite, you can just shout it out.
Thanks, Armin. The behavioral needs that you were just talking about, is that just, are you just talking about the students with IEPs or is that district?
I would have to say no. I would have to say district. So definitely general ed students that we're struggling with, too. So, you know, I think that's why I pulled our behavior analysts together this year and we're meeting on, you know, Fridays. I meet with them whenever I can, which is most weeks I do. And talking about kids and really how can we better support not just the students, but our general ed teachers, especially the elementary who have these little people all day long. You know, it's different when you're at a middle school and you've got to get through one block, you know, and it's a whole team and you can work on it together. But in the elementary school, it can be really overwhelming for an elementary teacher who can sometimes feel alone. So we're trying to get a better way to approach behavior as a bigger team and support teachers, principals and students. They often feel bad after an incident that they got so dysregulated. So we're, that's definitely something we're continuing to work on. So one of the other trends is teams and families are keeping kids in the least restrictive environment. So kids are learning right here in Long Meadow, which is great, because we have a lot to offer all kids. Students with autism and mental health needs are still our highest rate of placement. So those are the kids that sometimes, sometimes a student just does need a different placement and we do do that. And I think we're pretty good at recognizing when that time has come, where we've exhausted everything we have before we do that. And then the achievement gap between general ed and students with disabilities remains. And that's not, you know, exclusive to Long Meadow either. That's the state and the nation. And we continue to look at data and programming to see how we can change that. So where do we go? Exploring opportunities to expand the district programming. I would love to, in the next couple of years, be able to have an autism program at Center School as well, so that all students with autism could be served in their neighborhood school. You know, that's one of the reasons why people move here. So that would be wonderful if we could do that. And then if we could continue to increase the special ed staffing so that we can do more in our elementary schools at the grade levels, I think that would be a wise investment. And then we continue to do professional development and consultation and coaching for students, I mean, for staff, general ed and special ed on inclusive practices, just building our capacity to meet the needs of all kids, whether they're general ed kids, special ed kids, ELL kids. That's kind of the goal. So I think that is it.
Any further questions for Jean?
Yeah, I have one quick question. The evaluation that we just went through as a district, you just went through in detail and was fabulous, thank you very much. How often do we have to go through that? Is that every five years?
It used to be every six. Was it five or six? And now it's, they say six, but it's really three. So we just, this is, because they broke it in half. So you do your part A and then your part B, which is why it was much more manageable. So when Sue was director, we, you know, we worked on a coordinated program review the old way. And it was not as supportive and it wasn't as streamlined as it is now. So we did part A. We'll get our report in a few weeks on how we actually did when they write it up. And then we almost have a year off and then we start again on the pre-self-assessment for the other half. So it's kind of like every three years is how it's going. But this is our first time through, because this is brand new, all the changes that they've made, so.
Yeah.
And we'll see. I'm already peeking at it.
Yeah, can only imagine. If you go back to page six real quick, I just have a question on that.
I don't know if I can. Where's Nick going to need them, right? Six. This one.
Yeah, so just, not really anything to do with the numbers, but, you know, we added as a district, a few different teachers, specialists in different areas. So is the, is the goal, I just like the idea, kind of what you, from your perspective, is the goal to be able to help all those children, the 27 children within town? Is that not realistic? Is that your goal?
I don't think that's...
Is that our district's goal?
I think our goal is to, to serve as many kids as we can.
In town.
But there will always be students that will require an out-of-district placement due to the severity of their disability or the severity of the behaviors associated with their disability, where it becomes a safety issue. Or if there's so much physical care that we're not equipped to be lifting children and, so I don't think it would ever be none.
But the addition...
But I think when you look at 27 with 2,800 students, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty low.
Yeah. I was more, I didn't realize how low it was. I was just wondering what...
No, I actually didn't eat until I was doing this and you crunched the numbers, you know. You know, every day, because of, you know, you're living it, that, oh yeah, this kid came back or this student, you know. But until you sit and crunch your numbers, yeah, no, that's something that everyone should be really proud of.
Yeah.
It's a lot of hard work by a lot of people in district, because that means we're keeping students with greater needs here, which is harder work. It's a lot of hard work. And that's everyone, regular ed teachers, special ed teachers, principals, that, but it's really good for kids.
Thank you, Jean. I really appreciate this.
And again, if anyone needs any follow-up, I'm happy to, happy to do that. If it's okay, anybody.
Oh, you have one more?
Sorry. But I do want to say, having done, having not been in your shoes specifically, but having seen and, you know, had to supervise a special education department and having them go through a focus monitoring experience, I completely understand that world of compliance is very difficult. It's very challenging. It's very time-consuming. So I, thank you for, for doing that.
You're welcome.
I had one, like, one little notice and it was about the, oh, the focus on transition, the aging out and the life skills program. And I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of a words person. And so when I looked at, you know, that those students were on a non-college track, you know, but they're actually, some are starting to access a college track, like the Think College Initiative. I, I think if we can just maybe think differently about like what college might look like for those kids, you know.
Right. So I guess what it really is, is they're on a non-diploma track.
Right, right.
So they're going to get a certificate of achievement.
Sure.
Or a certificate of attendance, but they are not earning a Long Meadow High School diploma.
Right. But they'll be able to, right, I completely get that. But they, but they are getting, we are providing them access to college that they might not get. So I just, I think it's, I think it's an important, you know, like, just a language piece that, you know, Westfield State, you know, that's, and then that Think College Initiative, the more we move in that direction, that's a pathway to college.
Oh, definitely.
So I just, I just thought that, you know, just, you know, it was just a notice.
That's a fair point, to think about, to think about a pathway as opposed to, you know, you wouldn't want to leave anyone with the impression that the track ends, you know, at Long Meadow High.
Right.
That there's pathways that extend well beyond the walls of this school.
When we were looking at that residential data, so when you look at five years ago, these programs weren't there.
Right.
They just did not exist.
Exactly.
So, you know, you were trying to, you were placing kids in programs to get them that 18 to 22 kind of experience.
No, I've been through the same thing and bringing them home and having them live in their community where they're likely going to live anyway.
Right.
And being able to access the community resources is such a rich experience for them.
Yeah, and the reality is the state, when kids are turning 22, it is really difficult for kids to get housing. And that wasn't the case before. So if a school had residentially placed, you would have a better chance of getting housing through DDS or DMH. And that's just not true anymore. They've completely changed that. So it's really a disadvantage. Like you want to keep them home, let them learn their community, you know, do internships, build some relationships socially, so that they have a full life of employment or recreation and social right here.
Absolutely.
So it's all good.
Thank you.
All good stuff.
Again, thank you very much, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, well done.
Next up, Dr. O'Shea.
Sure. Fair amount to report and some items that go beyond the written report that was in your packet. First, welcome to our, the newest members of the committee. Got an opportunity to sit with each of you and welcome further conversations. And I know it's a, it's a very challenging position and requires a sharp learning curve. And so if we can assist in that, I know the central office administrators stand ready to meet with you at any time as well, if you haven't had that chance. So welcome once again. It's great to have me on board. So a couple of things, we have, we had a great meeting just before this meeting of our Parent Curriculum Advisory Council. Sue and I met with the council and it's a diverse group of parents that cut across all of our schools and all grade levels. And talked a lot this afternoon about middle school ELA practices. And we brought the group up to speed on some of the social studies changes that are, will eventually make their way to this committee, because we'll need to offer you a chance to consider whether or not to embrace the recommendation for a textbook, particularly at eighth grade. So that'll, that's on the horizon. Couple of dates coming up, we have the elementary parent-teacher conferences at the end of this week. The high school start time task force meets again on March 28th. The tax ceiling task force meets on March 26th, so we're looking forward to that. Monday evening, Chairman Ray, Tom Az and I went to the select board meeting and they positively reviewed and received the statements of interest. So they voted to support the submission of those statements of interest to the MSBA. So we are, we're going to compile that and get it into the MSBA portal and we'll get it off to the MSBA before the deadline. I think it's April 12th, I think is the, is the due date there. So you can count on that being sent off. We had a great meeting recently, also the finance committee in early March. And that committee was engaged, asked a lot of great questions. They were specifically focused on sort of long-term sustainability and cost containment measures. And we hope we gave them the answers that they, that they needed. Couple other things coming up, May 9th is the Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award banquet. And so I think we've identified a committee member to represent the school committee at that banquet at the log cabin. So I think it's, Armin is going to join us, so thank you. And then I also wanted to put on your radar screen that probably in the first meeting in May, we will bring forward any handbook changes that we have, the LHS handbook and the K8 handbook. I'm not anticipating that it will be anything, you know, there'll be, it won't be significant changes, but there'll be some important changes. And then we're looking forward to our admin school committee retreat next Monday night. That's at 5:00. And we'll be heading over to Glenbrook Middle School to engage in a Makerspace Challenge. So we're excited for the opportunity to kind of work with you informally and have some fun at the same time. But I'm also excited for all of you to see the work of the teachers that have been involved with that Makerspace, because we think that that's a, it's a great example of how we can create constructivist learning opportunities for kids and the opportunities for kids to problem solve and be, roll up their sleeves and be actively engaged in their learning. So a couple of great things will happen, I hope, as a result of that retreat. So that's Monday night.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any questions for Dr. O'Shea? Karen?
I'm sorry. The handbook changes in May?
Yeah.
Is that, does that involve like parent feedback and guardian feedback?
It does. So the, before the handbook changes come to you, the expectation would be that the principals run the handbook changes through their school councils and seek approval at the school council level for any proposed handbook changes. At the high school, they also do a nice job of soliciting student feedback. So Mr. Dunkerly actually convenes a handbook committee that consists of staff and students. And I know Mr. Landers also works with his PAC as well to talk to them about potential handbook changes. So we welcome parent feedback. And if there's any handbook changes that relate to school committee policy, we would be sure to get the policy in place along with any potential handbook changes. So I know we're going to talk a little bit later about the policy subcommittee. There's at least one handbook issue that we will want to bring before the policy subcommittee when it's established, so.
Any other questions for Dr. O'Shea? Did you have ones, Sue?
I question him all day long.
Okay, just taking a shirt.
I have questions for him all day long, make that clear.
Okay. Next, we have Sue with her report.
Yeah, welcome, everybody. Oh, my question's on our head. Thanks so much, welcome. It's nice to have a full committee sitting here, it feels great. Appreciate the support. I wrote this about three weeks ago now, I think, but I'll go through it, not the whole thing. But as far as social-emotional learning is concerned, I try to report out based on our district goals. So there's a youth mental health first aid training at the library in Long Meadow and I popped it out to all of our staff and right away we had many takers. So just goes to show you that this, this is a committed staff for social-emotional health and PD. And so we've got a lot of folks giving up their salary to go to this. It's supposed to be amazing training. So I think there may still be openings, anybody wants to go. Our close community, somehow I am the rep for the sector, of the school sector. We've been analyzing data from the, the community surveys and I think you'll be getting some of that data sometime soon. We had a health lesson starting at Blueberry Hill, if you have kids at Blueberry, in the fourth and fifth grade. As an admin team, we are kind of taking a peek at accountability data. We had some more data released by the Department of Education for subgroups and looking at students who are lowest performing groups of students. So we're, I'm not sure if looking forward is the right word to use, but we are at least going to be digging into that data and seeing where we can really make targeted improvements there. Let's see, lots of stuff going on with curriculum alignment. The, the main focus this year again is history and social sciences. We have work going on K5 in a committee, work going on six, seven and eight in a committee. And then the high school is also pulling apart the standards and determining when they're going to teach US history and world history and where and all of those things. So lots of stuff in motion and we have some amazing coordinators who help to do all that work and bringing groups together. So we'll keep you up to date on that stuff. You will probably be seeing a civics book sooner than later. This committee has to vote on the text, but I think you have opportunity to have the text for a couple of weeks to look through it and let us know how you feel about it. Our kindergarten math, we have a curriculum website in the works, so you should be able to see that at some point soon. That will provide a scope and sequence along with educational materials that teachers can kind of click on. And we'll have a lot more resources at their fingertips to teach kindergarten math. Our kindergarten teachers were pushing back a little bit on the text that we adopted K through five and thought there wasn't enough games and kind of hands-on activities to play. So the math professors have gone through and kindergarten and really written and developed this great kind of supplemental piece to the kindergarten math curriculum. So they're pretty excited about that. They'll continue that work between now and the end of the school year. In March and April, today, we have a collaboration between our high schools, some of our high school teachers and college professors. So we're hoping to pick the brains of the college professors to say, you know, what are your, what are we sending kids to you with? What skills do they have? What do you, you know, what's great? And then where are the gaps or the holes and where do we need to work on that? So I haven't gotten any feedback, we'll see how that, that went. We also had a celebration lunch, which, for our admin staff, we, once a year, pay homage to the great work that they do. We couldn't do it without them, for sure. And that was a good time on Friday. We did that on our PD day during our lunch hour. We're working on licensure, renewal, evaluation. Kindergarten registration is going strong. We have four-year-olds walking through the doors every, you know, couple of hours, so it's pretty fun. fun. We had a virtual reality demo, Bronwyn was there, it was amazing, maybe they'll bring it back to us sometime. And then we had, I wrote this before we had it, but last Friday, we had our last full PD day of the school year and there you can see some of the, just a small sampling really of some of the things that our teachers were engaged in, our teachers, our assistants, our peer professionals, our custodians, our office folks, everybody was engaged in PD that day and the main focus, I guess I would say, would be the culturally appropriate practices that Ariel Nelson came and spoke to the whole district, we, we all saw her and she spoke to marginalized students a little bit and so it was a, something that we had been working on and finally got her in here and so, it was pretty good.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a meaningful day, it really, I think, an opportunity for all staff to reflect on their own perspectives, their own biases and their own values and how those influence the work that, you know, the services that we provide to students and we even, our custodial staff was there, our clerical staff participated, so it was, it was an opportunity for reflection, an opportunity for challenge and we, I think we all agree that it's work that we need to sustain, that, you know, we, we don't want this to be sort of a, a once and done experience and that's feedback that I heard from the staff, that I talked to following that, that session, so.
There was a lot of lively conversation with the presenter and the audience, you know, and the higher the grades went, the more conversation there was, so, appreciated it. Yeah, that's about it, I mean. I guess I too would invite you to come and visit with me anytime you'd like to check out what happens in our office and across the hall, so, feel free.
Any questions for Sue? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Mazza.
I will be short and to the point.
Thanks, Mr. Mazza.
As I try to be.
Is that an editorial statement? What are you saying?
Nick Drogantis and I met with the head custodians earlier this month, talked about professional development, preparing for summer cleaning and building maintenance issues. Sue and Marty mentioned the PD day, the custodians participated in CPR training that was provided by the Long Meadow Fire Department, they also covered AED, automated external defibrillators and just kind of reviewed use of a fire extinguisher with the hope of never having to use one, but just to make sure that they're aware and knowledgeable on proper use. In regards to summer cleaning, we'll be posting for some summer custodial positions, every year we try to hire Long Meadow High School students to work for about eight weeks in the summertime, they get assigned to assist the custodial staff in cleaning or painting that takes place during the summertime, so that posting will be available in the next two or three weeks. We also participated, Mr. Drogantis and I, on March 8th with a representative from our insurance company in a self-audit safety inspection, just to check for compliance with OSHA standards, so we did some site visits and walked around and looked at just some issues that, you know, need some follow-up and Nick took some notes and has already jumped on top of a couple of issues to rectify them, but overall, I think we're, we're in a pretty good place and this just was just a precautionary, I think proactive measure on our part, just to make sure we're addressing any safety concerns that might be in the buildings. We also were, had an audit performed on our annual financial report that we submit to the state, it was done earlier this month, the results, once we have some finance subcommittee meetings scheduled, we'll bring the, the report to finance sub for their review and, you know, include it in a meeting packet for the full committee for information. And finally, we are pulling together information for a biennial report that we submit to the US Department of Education, it is a civil rights report that requires a substantial amount of information regarding students, teachers and school and district-based expenditures. The scope has kind of grown over the years, so it's a pretty big undertaking of individual in my office and an individual in the tech department who handles a lot of the staff and student Massachusetts State reporting to fill out the information, so that's underway. And just as a follow-up to Jean, at the SEAL April 12th meeting, it's, I believe it's conflicts with the school committee meeting, Jean and I will be attending the SEAL meeting to present the FY '20 budget to the SEAL group, so, I'll be stepping out to participate in that meeting with Jean. And that is it.
Any questions for Mr. Mazza?
Seeing none, move on to my report and I will try and be even more brief than Tom. Just to reiterate, Marty and I both, Marty, myself, Tom, Bronwyn, met with both the finance committee and the select board on the statements of interest and on the budget. As Marty said, the finance committee asked some pretty pointy questions, but fair questions, we responded to those, I would say the same thing happened with the select board as well. On the statements of interest with the select board, I think the only one area that they pushed back on, or Marco pushed back and Mr. Foster was pushing a little in that direction as well, was, you know, what do we want, like, they want, they were asking, like, what would you want the plan to be and quite frankly, that's not how the process works with MSBA, you have to go through the feasibility study, you have to take into account the reactions of the public, you have to take the input of the teachers, there's so many different inputs that have to go into it that, you know, I, I couldn't give an answer in front of them to say, oh, I'd like to see one building in the middle of town that everybody gets bused to, because that's not, as an individual member of the school committee, I'm just an individual member, I can't speak on behalf of everybody, but they were asking, would we take a stand and, and quite frankly, the MSBA process doesn't allow you to take a stand, it takes you there. Now, that doesn't mean that when we get, if we are so graceful to be chosen, that they come back and say, hey, we're going to pay for X plan and then the community says, well, that just doesn't fit in with the character of our community, the community can always reject the plan and decide to fund it all outright on our own, but that's, that's a, that's a pathway to that process and a decision that would have to be made at that time, so. That was, that was some of the feedback that, that came out of that meeting and then the only other thing I have is 328 is the teacher, the staff appreciation at the Long Meadow High School and I know that they're looking for labor, love and in-kind donations, so, I think Sherri Ehrenberg is still running that, it seems like she's been running it for the last 15 years, but, God bless her for doing it. So, that's my report. Any questions or? All right. Moving on, student rep report, Reggie.
I'll be even more brief. I don't have anything to say that wasn't said earlier, so.
Great, thank you. It says LPVAC, do we have a report? Bronwyn or?
At the recent meeting, they were just sharing that Governor Baker signed into law a new statute that amends a previous mass general law surrounding educational collaboratives. This amendment provides the opportunity for educational collaboratives to play a greater role in improving students, a support to students in all ways and through the state, throughout the whole state. There's six new key components in place to help as the state works toward full implementation, the deadline they're looking at is January 10th of 2020. I'm happy to share more about the key provisions, we have another LPVAC meeting tomorrow evening, so I'll report on that one at our next school committee meeting.
Great, any questions? Moving on to ongoing business, so, I'm going to try and make this as easy as I can, so, and, and I hopefully give a little tutorial at the same time of how we, where we are and where we need to get.
Can I ask this or are you good?
I'm good. So, under policy BDE of the school committee, there are three standing committees of the school committee only. So, you have the operations subcommittee, you have the finance subcommittee and you have the policy subcommittee. So, those are the three standing committees of the school committee. Over the past, Tom, I don't know how long historically, but in recent history, the operations subcommittee has not been utilized, it has kind of been folded into the finance subcommittee, which I do not disagree with, but that's just my opinion as a single member. From a streamlined perspective, if we think there, there is no value to a separate operations subcommittee, that's fine, as a committee, we can vote on that to, to change that, but I think we should actually change that in the policy itself instead of letting it stay out there that there are three standing committees of the school committee and one of the standing committees doesn't actually exist, so. That's a, so let's, I guess, have a conversation about that first, on those three standing committees.
What was the history, I mean, I know we aren't, aren't really doing that, but what was the, there was obviously some history as to why that was, just so I can understand why there was three?
Yeah, I, my best recollection is the operations subcommittee dealt with a number of consolidation of operations between the school and towns back to, I want to say maybe '07, as they were implementing the charter, there were some changes in the way various functions that were operated by the schools that transitioned over to the town. And then, since then, we've also consolidated IT from two separate departments under one consolidated department under the school, so they worked on the memorandum of agreements around those consolidations. You know, there was talk of field maintenance in terms of the town who oversees the, the maintenance of the fields and developing, again, another memorandum of agreement in terms of standards around those, so, those were some of the major areas, I would say, that the operations subcommittee would deal with in the past, but I would say, as Armin indicated, I'd say over the last three to five years, it's probably been quiet and active and any of those issues that might come up primarily would have fallen with finance up.
Okay.
So, procedurally, if we decide that that's something we would like to change, procedurally what will happen is that later we'll get to assigning somebody to the policy subcommittee or persons to the policy subcommittee, they would need to create the new policy, we would publish that for a period of time, let people ruminate on that in the, the public and then we would take it back after the notice period and vote on it. Am I right or wrong, Diane?
You are correct.
Thank you. So, discussion?
I would say based on what I just heard, knowing that amount of information on this and hearing kind of the history from '07 and knowing what was going on back then, that it doesn't make any, initially, my gut says, doesn't make any sense to have two separate committees, in my opinion.
And if it turns out that we need to put that committee back, we can always put it back?
Correct.
Yeah.
I just don't like the fact that the, personally, I just don't like the fact that the policy isn't matching up with practice right now.
Right, right. No, I think it makes sense and then, you know, you do ultimately talk about operations within finance anyway, so I think it makes perfect sense to merge the two committees because the, the operations have, you know, an impact on the finances, it all goes back to the finance on that.
Tom, what's your title?
Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to know.
Finance comes first.
It sure does.
That's what I'm trying to teach you.
Okay, so then, based upon that, we'll, we'll look at this, so, policy BDA, which you have in your manual as well, establishes how we form the, the committee for the, the year. So, since the committee changed mid-year, we had to reorganize, under BDA, Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, so it'd be myself, it'd be Bronwyn and that'd be Ryan, that is until the end of the school year, that is not something you redo, so, this is in place. So, here, since we decided that we will remove that for now, we'll work on this in policy, we need to fill this team with two teams of three. So, my, my hope is that we are able to get everybody to do one subcommittee and one other assignment, either a school or some, you know, either, and by school, I mean being the liaison with the PTL or if the principal wants to give you the, hey, I've got something I'd love for you to do on recognition or whatever it is, just kind of being the liaison. So then, we'll start with finance subcommittee, Ryan, I know you were already on finance sub. I, I guess I'd open it up to who is interested in serving on finance subcommittee?
I am, I'm interested in that committee.
And Ryan, you're, you stay?
Yeah, I'll stay, I'm happy to.
And just so we all know, the Chair and the Superintendent are ex officio members of all the subcommittees, so, basically, we'll be there anyways most of the time.
Yep.
Anybody else, finance sub?
It's really fun.
I'll do it if there's no one else who wants to.
Bronwyn?
It's good telling you.
Good. Nice. Diane, you're taking notes on this too, right?
Yeah.
All right, now we need to fill the policy, now, I'll also tell you, policy, they just did it in 2016, the, pretty comprehensive review, right, of the policies?
Did they do the whole man?
Not in my time, not top to bottom, we've, we've made many, many, yeah, many changes, but not a top to bottom review.
Historically, they always start with A and they start going through and then the year runs out and then we start with A again, so.
I remember sitting down with Jan and just.
This year, they did, we started with some of the other policies when, when you were reviewing them, we went further in.
So, basically, they're all codified on our, our website, there's an index there as well, as things need to change, we would make the changes to, to the policy, so, who would like to serve on policy? Jan?
Great.
I'm good for comments.
Suzie? Kevin?
Yeah.
That was easy. Yeah, and the other thing is that I know, we haven't really engaged them much in the last couple of months, but MASC as well has always been a good resource to sit down with and get updates on, on new policies coming down the pike too.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get legal updates from attorneys, we'll get updates from MASC, there might be things that the school committee identifies as needing to be rectified as far as policy goes, there are things that come to us from the administrators and we work those through policy sub as well, so the influences come from a lot of different directions and that usually works well that way, so.
So, your first job on policy subcommittee would be? Look at BD, amend BDE, there you go, and then get it to Diane and she'll publish it, or we'll bring it here and then get it published. Okay, so, these are the two, so now we have two standing committees on the school committee, we are enabled to do ad hoc committees as well. So, as of right now, unless Diane corrects me, we have one ad hoc committee, it's the evaluation subcommittee. Ad hoc committees are specified for a specific task or time duration unless otherwise canceled first by the school committee, so we can cancel a subcommittee, ad hoc school, we can cancel an ad hoc committee at any time, but they are set up for a specific task over a period of time or the duration of the task. So, right now, this one was set up to work with Marty on goals, evaluation, we just had the mid-year evaluation, which was, you know, came as part of this, so, we are going to have to do a year-end evaluation and then the question is after, at that point, I think, with the constitution of new school committee is, does this go beyond into the next school year or is this something that we want to keep on? And I don't think that's discussion right now because we keep it, the question I have right now is, we need three people to serve on evaluation subcommittee. Suzie, okay?
I'll stay after.
Okay?
I'll join.
Ryan, Bronwyn, Suzie. They jumped on it quick, I don't want to like, you know, shut out anybody else who has, you know, burning desire. I don't want to like, you know, shut out anybody else who has, you know, burning desire to serve on that, so. Okay. Okay. Nice. So now we got school assignments. You know the schools.
Armin, while you're hanging it up tonight?
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Okay.
As long as it's in regard to this topic.
We need a volunteer to be on our wellness committee, so we need to look at the wellness policy and update that. So one person, maybe?
Well, when we thought about it, we thought we would overview the process with Policy Sub. And then from Policy Sub, we could identify a committee member to serve on that group that will review and revise the wellness policy.
Perfect.
Which is not to be confused with the wellness team, another group that heads up. But the wellness policy is some very specific language in your policy manual, and there's a very specific process that we have to go through to revise the policy. So that's what Suzie's talking about. But you and I hadn't had a chance to chat about that. That's okay, no, but...
Okay. So we have seven assignments for schools as liaisons. Can tell you, in my experience, this isn't a lot of work. It's maybe a meeting once a month. Some of the schools meet a little bit more, some might meet a little bit less. Really, they're just looking for a connection to the school committee to bring their concerns or have a voice at the table if need be. So Blueberry currently is Bronwyn. Do you want to keep that? Is that...
I do.
Okay. Does anybody want to like go Thunderdome with Bronwyn on getting Blueberry?
I'll, I'll argue that.
Okay. Ryan has Glenbrook. Is that something you want?
They might want a different person because I failed to do anything with them.
Okay.
Their meetings have been so early that I've basically missed them all because I'm still at work.
Okay. When are their meetings?
Yes, they were like at like four o'clock. I only leave Springfield before.
I can do Glenbrook.
You can book? Okay. So we'll choose that one to Dr. Bell. Now we'll go through the rest. Anybody have a great affinity for the SEAL? Problem with the SEAL portion of this is their meetings are at the same exact time on the same days as ours. So they always conflict. So it's kind of hard to do it.
I enjoyed going to that SEAL meeting. I don't know if y'all, I don't know how that, like, if I can go to SEAL and then go to, like, I don't know how that works, but I'd be happy to.
Okay. Well, I'll put you down as the liaison for now. Again, I, I mean, I used to be the liaison a long time ago when it was called different things in the past and worked very closely with some of the parents on that, between there and the school committee. And I learned a lot back then, so.
And as long as, I guess, SEAL would understand that
Yes.
Here would take, you know, priority.
Agreed. Center School?
I'll take center if nobody has any objections.
Okay. Wolf Swamp? Anybody?
I'm holding out for Williams.
Okay, well, I'll take Wolf Swamp if nobody else takes Wolf Swamp. That's fine. Williams? Jana? Okay. You're taking two? Nice.
Well, I figure, Williams, I have a child there and...
LHS?
Set me up.
Okay. I kind of figured that was what you were holding out for, Kevin. I was holding out for that one, too, but that's okay. All right. Okay, so we got all the schools settled. We'll move it on to the last one, which, this is going to be a discussion about whether we keep some of these things or not. These are some of the current assignments we have. So there's the high school start time, which is not wing away. I was trying to rack my brain earlier what this one was, but it's the middle school working group.
There you go.
We got payroll. We've got the LPVAC. We've got negotiations. Tax ceiling task force. Is this helpful or am I just like?
Yeah, that's good.
Just making sure. Because you'll notice, no, I'm not usually this detailed, so.
It's nice to have the digital aids.
Where do you get the paper?
Just because it's the first.
Okay. So we'll start with the ones that I know we have to do. So there's two, which, does everybody know what LPVAC is? Yeah, so, Tom, you want to give a little background on collaborative on what's different, or Marty?
Happy to differ.
What's the difference between the two sides? Difference between the corporation and the collaborative?
The corporation is responsible for the physical assets, the properties. And I'd say it's a less taxing assignment, except in those times when they might be buying, acquiring, or selling properties. And then the collaborative is the, is the board of directors for the collaborative itself and overseeing programming and budgets. And they meet monthly, I believe. And that happens to be on Wednesday nights, I think.
Yes.
That's subject to change. But the collaborative board of directors is, requires more of your time, I would say, than the corporation.
That is correct.
So currently, Ryan, you are on the corporation, Bronwyn, you're on the collaborative?
Yes.
Are you both willing to stay?
Yeah, the corporation is next to no work.
Okay.
Yeah, I enjoy.
Everybody else is okay with that?
Three times a year. That's really it.
Everybody else okay with those assignments? Okay. We have payroll, which basically is a member of the committee has to sign off on the payroll. We convened and selected Ryan. So unless anybody has a problem with Ryan, we would continue along that path.
That's fine with me.
Good. Much along the, we have the warrants. So warrants basically are all of our bills in a giant packet. If you ever want to know exactly, like, I mean, if you ever want to see what we are actually paying out in money, you can go through the bills. Tom will be more than happy to let you sit down and look at them. But somebody has to like sign off on our bills. And right now, Ryan's that person, Bronwyn's his backup. That's still good for everybody?
Sure.
Ryan?
I'm more than, you, you've signed up for a lot, so.
There is one that you have to sign today.
I know, I just said that to Tom while he was taping it to the wall.
I'm more than willing to do that, but I, I'm fine with Ryan doing it. So whichever, I'm willing to put my name.
Does the warrant and the payroll have to be the same person or not? No.
They do not have to. They can do.
The warrant can have a backup, the payroll cannot have a backup.
Right. So you want to do the warrants?
I'm fine with either.
I'm good with staying with payroll. If you want to do the warrants, you can do it.
So we both?
I'm Chair.
So that's...
Is it starting tomorrow or starting next week?
But we're going to have to vote on that.
Yeah, he's, but can we do it starting next week so Ryan can finish? Because there's a one out there.
So do you want to, how about we wait until the next meeting to make it effective?
Well, there'll probably be another warrant, so probably have it.
Yeah, but he's still authorized until we make a motion. So why don't we make a motion at our next meeting? Are you sure?
Whatever.
Okay.
This meeting will be perfect. Thank you.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, so we're good on the warrants. So now we get into, let's see, let's stick with the other ones. We have the tax ceiling, tax ceiling task force, which, if you don't know what that is, that means we are under proposition two and a half. The states, the law of Massachusetts sets a limit of the amount that you can tax at $25 per thousand for a levy. We are quickly coming up against that, $25 per thousand. If the state does not give us some sort of relief, you know, we would have to do something within the town of Long Meadow to, to accommodate that without raising taxes. And the point of, point of this is to see how we can get the legislature to either help us out by making a legislative change or, you know, some other mechanism within the state to help out Long Meadow on that, that course. I got put on that one. It doesn't meet very often, so I don't mind staying on that unless somebody else wants to be there. High school start time is a, it's a superintendent task force.
Correct. Superintendent Task Force. We've, we've been at it most of this year and essentially charged with, at some point, bringing a recommendation back to the committee to determine whether or not we should move the high school to an earlier start time. And so the later start time, not earlier. I'm tired.
Have you met my high school kid?
Thank you. And so we've got, we've done sort of a literature review, we've looked at a lot of the research. We've taken a look at the busing implications, the athletic implications, at least on like sort of a first pass through. We are sort of poised to begin bringing the work to the broader community, perhaps through surveys, perhaps through some forums. We haven't quite figured that roadmap, part of the roadmap out yet, but we do have a very specific action plan in place. And so there has been a, a school committee representative on that task force currently, Bronwyn, so.
So Bronwyn, do you want to stay?
Either way, if there's a new person that wants to, is really interested in that and wants to do that, they can. And if not, I'm happy to stay. Either way, it works for me, honestly.
When do you usually meet on that one?
We've tried to stagger the meetings between late afternoon and early evening because, you know, we're split on what time works best. So we've had some four o'clock meetings, we've had some seven o'clock meetings. And I think we'll continue that pattern. It's the best way to meet the schedules of the most people.
So I'd be happy to jump on that one. Okay. Good. Got that one. Okay, so then we have, we have food service. But Tom and I had been talking about that. Tom, your opinion on food service as a separate committee or should it just go under finance sub?
It can go under finance sub. It is an advisory committee. Since we have an outsourced model, we have a service provider that operates our program, we're required to have a food service advisory committee. It'd be nice to have a school committee representative on the committee, attend the meetings. We meet, I'd say, five or six times throughout the course of this year. We try to get out and sample the school lunches. So we usually meet during the school day.
So I, I, I kind of think that it would just fall under the finance subcommittee and then one of the three members would kind of attend the meetings as needed. Is that, would that work for you, Tom?
Sure.
As opposed to a separate
Yep, that'd be fine.
Assignment?
Yep.
So I'd open that up to feedback or discussion.
Can the committee rotate? Or should it have to be the same?
Yeah, I think it's fine. There's no prescribed constitution of the membership, so I think just so long as the committees are being informed on, I think, some of the happenings in the program and, you know, initiatives that are being undertaken and some of the changes, it's just important for them to be aware of it. So sure.
I think it makes a lot of sense. Seems like it's going to streamline the process and the people who should be having the conversation and give feedback to the group are the ones that are going to be keeping an eye on it, so.
Okay. So we have two left. We got negotiations. Marty, you want to give an update? I mean, we're going to have, you'll, lucky you, you're going to get into, see an executive session tonight, so, but...
This may be one where, well, I don't want to be presumptuous. We are still working towards agreements with the bargaining units other than, other than A, which is the teacher's unit. And so the question is whether you want a committee member to be a part of those negotiations or simply be a, sort of point of contact for Tom and I. We are, I would, I think we can say even here, making progress. And so it may become moot very quickly. It may not be a needed assignment.
Yeah, and I think we'll, as we get into the executive session tonight, we'll get, you guys will have more information on what we're looking at. So I would hold off on assigning that. The committee as a whole had given direction instead of having just one or two people in the recent past. The last one we have up there is the middle school working group. You want to speak a little bit about the middle school working group?
The middle school working group was active in the '16, '17 school year. That was the point where we had resurrected our interest in the statements of interest. And there was a lot of sort of re-education that needed to be done, a lot of community engagement that needed to be done. Since that time, since the '16, '17 school year, the middle school working group has not been, has not met and hasn't needed to meet. And I don't see any particular reason why we need to have a committee member assigned to it. If we, if we are invited into the eligibility period with the Mass School Building Authority, then I would say very quickly, we would not only need a middle school working group, but we would need a school building committee. So I think you're all set there, but...
Good. Any further comments or discussion about what we just did? Thank you all for indulging my visuals. I'm not normally a visual learner, but I think it worked for me.
Good differentiation.
Hope it worked for you.
Good differentiation.
Yeah. Okay. We got ongoing business done. We are now moving on to new business. The FY '20 budget was developed, keeping the fees the same as they are for the preschool fee. There is a recommended motion before we get to that. Dr. O'Shea, you want to speak to that?
On the tuition, actually, if I would, Tom, would you mind?
Sure. So we do have, we charge for our preschool program. It's a peer model program. We receive anywhere from 22 to 25 students that pay the tuition. It has been $2,000, I'd say for the last approximately four or five years. I do think we, at times, can struggle finding students to fill our peer model slots. So I am recommending that we keep the tuition at $2,000.
There's a recommended motion?
I move that the school committee set the preschool tuition rate to $2,000 and offer a $50 discount to families who make the tuition payment in full by August 1st prior to their child beginning the program. This rate will remain in effect until the school committee chooses to consider and change the rate.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? There we go. Moving on, we have tuition rate. Finance subcommittee considered the tuition rate. This is charged for students who would like to attend LPS but reside outside of the state of Massachusetts. Currently, the tuition rate is $15,248. We do not have any tuition students at this time. Tom?
Sure. So the, the law allows the district to take in students from another state and charge a tuition. You can charge up to your per student expenditure amount. And the most recent data that is available is FY '17, which is the amount that I believe we used in last year's tuition of $15,248. We have not received a tuition students in about three years or so. When we have received the funds, we use it to offset some salaries. But again, it's been a number of years since we've, we've had a student choose to come to Long Meadow through this option.
Great. There's a motion?
I moved the, on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee, that the school committee set the tuition rate to $15,248 beginning in FY '20. This rate will remain in effect until the school committee chooses to consider and change the rate.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? Approved. Next is school choice, the school choice program for 2019, 2020.
So let me tag team this one. The, we, at the urging of one of the newer committee members, we have provided you with some sort of supplemental background information on the school choice program, and if that's something you'd like us to talk a little bit about, we're happy to. But our recommendation this year is to open three school choice slots at grade one for the 2019, 2020 school year. And so we had provided you with some enrollment information, some enrollment projections that we hope demonstrate that it would have a negligible effect on enrollment at grade one. We would, we typically don't, we don't need to at this stage identify what schools those slots would be opened at, and I think we would just sort of watch enrollment over the next few weeks and months and make a determination of where we would open those slots, but Center and Blueberry, I believe, seem like the, sort of the stronger candidates based on our enrollment. School choice, we receive a reimbursement of $5,000 from the sending district to cover the costs of educating those choice students. And the thought is, when you introduce school choice slots, that you want to do it in a way that's very strategic, you want to do it in a way that doesn't increase your costs. You know, the thought is that the furniture's there, the teacher's there, the textbook's there, and that by adding one more student, you are just having a sort of a negligible incremental effect on your costs. We've had great success with the school choice student program. Years ago, we introduced students at the ninth grade level. The philosophy in recent years has been to introduce students earlier. We feel like it gives them the foundation for success that they need. And by introducing three school choice students, opening three slots in 1920, it would more or less keep our school choice enrollment overall stable. So happy to answer questions. I know it's, this is sort of uncharted territory for some of our members, but again, we hope to do it in a thoughtful way, in a way that we can ensure the success of these students, but we're also confident that it wouldn't create, you know, a negative effect at all on class size. These are, we're introducing it in schools and classrooms where we can absorb the additional three school choice students. Questions?
Questions.
So thanks for the information.
That was definitely helpful. I mean, it looks to me like our numbers of school choice for students coming to us is staying pretty much the same, and I'm guessing that is that we want to, our goal for total number of students in the district is 2,900, so that's helping us keep it at around the number we want. I mean, is that true, that that is our goal, to keep it at about that number overall?
Yeah, in terms of overall enrollment?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say that we're approaching it as a way to maintain existing levels of enrollment necessarily, but it has been used to, you know, introduce students where the enrollment will allow. And so it has had the effect of helping us to kind of dull the edges on those ups and downs. So if you have increases at a particular grade level, you can pull back on your school choice allotments. If you have some decreases, it will allow you to, it'll allow you to manage that as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, but I don't know that that's, I don't know that we've looked at it in terms of maintaining the overall enrollment, but it does help us respond to enrollment changes and fluctuations, so.
So just a second question. It was kind of surprising to me that there are people choosing to send their kids not to Long Meadow schools. Like, I didn't realize that we had people choosing to go out of Long Meadow.
Yeah.
And I know they are very, very small numbers, so it's very hard to, like, have a trend, but the last three years, the trend is going up, which, do we understand why people are choosing not to go to our schools?
Great question. We haven't done exit surveys, and if that number continues to tick up, it's something that we might want to look at. Again, as you said, it's negligible compared to the overall enrollment, but it's something that we would want to pay attention to because that's a cost to us as well.
Anyway, anecdotally, Kevin, there's a lot of charter-specific schools that are out there now. Piner Valley, Chinese Immersion School, the Piner Valley Performing Arts School. Okay. That I know, that I know people within the district have sent their children there, so.
Got it, okay.
I don't know if that's the answer, but I mean, anecdotally.
Right, but that would make sense, that they're sending their kids to a school that offers things that we don't.
Potentially.
Potentially, I mean, we're not offering Chinese immersion.
Right, right.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. O'Shea? Seeing none, there is a motion.
I move that the school committee accepts students in the school choice program for the 2019, 2020 school year in the following grade level and number of seats. Grade one, three seats.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All of us in favor? Okay. Dr. O'Shea, Metco in 2019, 2020?
So similar, well, Metco was, we've participated in Metco for decades now, and this program was established back in the 60s as a way to allow students of color to access suburban school districts. Started out in Boston, and it's been spread to the other parts of the state. And again, we've had great success with the Metco program. Our students enjoy the experience. They introduce a component that, you know, may not be available to our students otherwise. And so the thought is here that we generally have about three Metco students per grade level, and that, you know, if we're, I think that's a commitment that we can continue to make going forward. So we receive from the Metco grant about $3,500 per student. The difference between Metco and choice is that we are responsible for transportation with the Metco students, but along with that comes opportunities to, there are, as part of the grant, there are ways to provide specific supports to the Metco students, so Sue coordinates that along with Sandy McDonald, who is our Metco coordinator, who has a here, office here in the high school, so.
Are there any questions? Or Sue?
So we have funds transportation as well.
Yeah. Any questions? Okay, there is a recommended motion?
I move on the recommendation of the administrative team that the school committee accepts students in the Metco program for the 2019 through 2020 school year in the following grade level and number of seats. Grade kindergarten, three seats.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is in second. Any discussion? The only thing I wanted to key on for my discussion is the statement you just made, and Kevin, if at any time anybody on this board feels like they need more information, don't hesitate. Reach out, ask. I can tell you, the admin team is more than willing to answer those questions. I would say be respectful, give them the time they need to respond to those questions, and I know respectfully back that they're answered. You know, the role of the chair is just to keep a meeting moving forward. I am not a gatekeeper. I am not here to keep you from interacting with admin, and like I said, I could say nothing but favorable things about Sue and Tom and Marty and the access that Nick and everybody, and Gene, that we get to answer these questions, and so thank you. So this is how it should work. You ask a question, you've got the data, and then we can share it together.
Yeah, our hope is to give you the information you need to make informed decisions. Diane often has more answers than we have as well, so she's, she's got some institutional memory and is a great resource for policy-related questions and other matters, so, yeah, we're here to help.
Great. Okay, that is it for the.
We did a vote.
Oh, we didn't, sorry. All in favor? Sorry. Pass. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Do we need votes on that? We're good on the?
No, no.
Okay.
There is an executive session planned for this meeting. I'll take a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law C30A, 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, E, F, and H, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes from previous meetings not to reconvene into open session.
This motion requires a roll call vote. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, that we will, any discussion? Roll call vote. Jamie? Yes?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bronwyn?
Aye.
Armin, aye. Ryan?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
We are now in executive session, not to adjourn.